Special video conference of the Frankfurt Franklin County Joint Working Group. And we'll make it official and call the meeting to order. And if the clerk would like to call the role for the city side.
Commissioner Waldridge.
President.
Mayor Wilkerson.
And I'm present.
And if the clerk would call the role from the county side.
Squire Sebastian.
Here.
Judge Wells.
Here.
Okay. And we're all here and the process today is similar to the last time. We have Tad Long from the Kentucky League of Cities here again to help us moderate. And first we'll, we'll talk about the process as it carry over from our, our last joint meeting. And then define the areas of mutual interest that we discussed last time and solidify that. And then we can talk about the next steps. I will turn this over to Tad Long.
Thank you, Mayor, Judge. It's good to see you all again. And I appreciate the opportunity to be with you this afternoon. I want to start off by commending both the city commission and the fiscal court for the previous joint meeting that I attended and for the progress that has been made. I thought that the outcomes were, were good. It was a very positive meeting. And I see by the agenda that's been developed that there's been some progress made. So, you know, there are some, a couple of things that we want to do and accomplish today. And my role again is to moderate and, and to make sure that we, we stay on task. Sometimes people want to generate immediate action. They want results right now. And I understand that impatience as well as anyone. I am not the most patient person in the world. But I have come to learn that it takes a series of small steps at first and then it starts to snow, snowball. So I'm trusting that that is the process and that's kind of what y'all have in mind. And I appreciate the deliberative way in which you've approached this. So looking at the, from the background and the agenda that's been, been provided, it appears to me that there really are two things that are, that you desire to have as outcomes today. And one is to understand this process, what does this lead to? And then the other is to talk about the specific areas in which you had an agreement and try to build some energy around moving those forward or fleshing them out a little further. And then at the conclusion, deciding on a next step, whether that's a, a meeting or that's empowering a couple of working groups or whatever that might be. But that, that decision is all up to you. I thought that it was, it would be helpful if we talked first about this process that you're going through and where that's going to lead next. And then as it pertains to any of these particular goals that, that were, or topics that were agreed to, what are, what are two or three of the things that might be placed on the table for this, for future discussion and development? So I hope that I'm on the right track with that and they kind of exist, they coexist. It's, it's hard to talk about what the process is if you don't know what you're trying to head toward. So let me just ask you, so you have this, this working group. This afternoon, we want to talk about the, the areas of economic development related to KC, KC DC, the bourbon industry, parks and sports, tourism, and planning and zoning. And so why do you want to come out of this meeting in terms of accomplishment? Are we, are we trying to get to some specific goals and steps that you want to take as next? Or you want to talk about the various two or three points of each one of these? What do you see as moving forward? A Squire Sebastian?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Long. I, I just wanted to ask a question, I guess, before we proceed forward in looking at these items. Mr. Long, did you develop the agenda and put these items on here? I, I just wanted to make sure I understood how the A, B, C, D, and E items from number three were, were identified to include. That, that might help me in, in framing, I think, what you're trying to, to get us to, to consider.
Sure, I did not.
And that was mutually between myself and the judge and these, these areas of possibilities were starting points. So that's why we have an other down there where we can, if there's something that we missed from that first meeting that someone else may have seen or heard, this is an opportunity for us to add or subtract any one of these things.
The key word is possibilities, not, not definites, but just possibilities. That's just kind of the process and what we're, and to define what we want to come out of our meetings.
Good, so I hope that that adequately answered the question. There were, I know out of that meeting, there were, there were several things that, that, that came to the fore. And so we want, we want to come out of this meeting with our areas in which city and county can agree that there's, there's synergy to work together to move on. It's not that any one of the topics previously was not important. It's just are these the areas where the city and county can have some immediate impact and move forward as quickly and expeditiously as possible? I, I think that that would be, that would certainly be a good outcome to get on the same page about two or three things. So, uh, did that help? Squire Sebastian?
Hmm, it's still a little murky for me, but I'll just kind of see how this first little bit unfolds and, and we'll go from there. Thank you very much.
Okay, sure. So Mayor and Judge, let me ask you all, first of all, you know, are there, are, are, are these some of the immediate areas that, that came to your all's minds in terms of ways in which you might start this, the working group? And, and what is it particularly that this, this group wants to be tasked? Or what is it that they want to accomplish as outcomes when we get to the end of the discussion or we move to the next meeting? What's your, what's, what's the, the vision for this in your all's estimation?
Well, first of all, I'll go for, uh, Ted, thank you, Mayor Fitz, okay? We're a committee, so it's, uh, this is not the mayor and myself. This is a committee. This is us working together. And also we are representatives of two governing bodies and, and the community as a whole. The initial discussion way back several months ago, actually probably back in the spring, was to have a joint meeting to talk about KC DC, to talk about what we do with economic development. So economic development, it wasn't strictly KC DC. It was DFI, it were other avenues for economic development. So that's all this, where my thought, what my thought is, and this is only my thought, because that's all we can do as a committee is talk about our, our thoughts at this time is to get a better definition of where and what we want to see. Most of all, a vision, goals and objectives from entities that we support or don't support that are, that are conduits for economic development. And so that, that is the initial, my opinion, the initial impetus for us meeting together and, and starting to talk, to work as a community towards enhanced, a clear vision or a, a better vision for economic development per se. That's, that's me.
Okay. Mayor, anything you want to add to that?
Yes, and so my thinking on this meeting is we will define those areas that came out of the last meeting. So the, the, these ideas that bubbled up that, that were repeated by multiple people, try to take the, you know, the, the broad themes and distill it down. And I was hoping that this meeting, we can define those two or three areas or however many we, we feel that we can actually do and develop a strategy for each of those, those areas. And whether it's a, you know, I'd also like to come out of this with a, a vision of, are we going to set up separate committees for each of these areas? And then a vision on how we can go about that? Or do we set up another joint meeting between both bodies, the big group, and address each of these areas individually? You know, a different theme for each meeting. So I think today is to decide which are, which areas are important to us? Which ones do we think we can work together toward defined goals? And maybe to decide that there's a couple that we don't want to at this time.
Okay, all right. So let's just, let's just start then, if it's okay with, with, with all of you. Let's, let's start with economic development. And last time, I think that there was broad general agreement that the city and county could work together on some things to enhance economic development and that, you know, there was discussion about cities and the county's role. And, you know, rather than getting down into the weeds of economic development, are there, are there two or three specific, big kinds of things that, that the city and county government could work on? And I will use an example, it just, and this is just an example. Whether it's, you know, some kind of industrial manufacturing or is it, you know, redevelopment of a strip mall? Or is it, you know, small business development? What are, what are those kinds of topics that fall under the realm of economic development that, that you think have the most potential? And I won't call on anyone in particular. I, I want everyone to have a, an opportunity to say something. So Commissioner Walters would be okay if I asked? I don't want to put you on the spot, but we're kind of all on the spot today. Is, is there a particular area in the economic development realm that, that particularly resonates with both city and county government in your opinion?
Are you there?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, sorry about that. Thank you, Ted, I appreciate you being here. And, okay, so are we speaking underneath of just economic development as a whole? Or is this part of KC DC? Just trying to see where I'm supposed to go with my answer here.
Sure, so, so, so I'm, I'm going to make a, an assumption here that we want, we're talking about the broader realm of, of economic development rather than focusing on a specific organization or entity, whether it's the downtown.
Anyone from the plant board on? Anybody from, any technicians, David or anybody? Okay.
Is anyone having trouble dialing out today on AT&amp;T? Anybody besides me? This is semi-related. Okay. I Googled it and didn't see anything, so.
All right. Let us know if it goes off again. So because by law, we have to either be on Facebook or YouTube.
Commissioner Walters, so let me, let me just, let me, let me back up for a second then. Let's talk about these four specific, these four things that were included on the agenda. And we can go through them just one by one and see how you and Squire Sebastian, the county, and of course the judge and the mayor have indicated their support is, in terms of, these are kind of the priorities. Are these the, are these the primary areas? Does everyone agree on that? Or is there some, is there another one that should be added? Or any of these that maybe are not as high on the priority list? So let's just use that as a, as the process to kind of whittle this down and get agreement on, on the areas. Either one, Squire Sebastian, how do you feel about the areas that are listed here? Are they any more important or something that's not on here?
Well, I, I have a question. I'm not sure why planning and zoning is on here.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm just, just, uh, asking that, I guess. For, for those who developed the agenda, that, that might help frame that for me.
Okay.
Wait, Mayor, I'll, that is, I'll let you.
Well, I think it was, it was brought up at the joint meeting that, you know, putting the county and the city planning and zoning offices together, at least in the same office, not necessarily merging them, but just, you know, sharing services in the same office. It was brought up at that meeting, so it's, it's on here for discussion. If that's, if that's something we want to explore further.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to add to it that planning and zoning is really important for economic development, how things are zoned for different types of businesses. So perhaps in our, in our joint work with the comprehensive plan, that's going to be very important for the future growth and development of our community. So I think this one.
Completely understand the, the rationale for that. But it seemed like that was a, to lesser degree than topics like education. I think every person on the, the discussion discussed education, yet it is not on here and maybe two or three people discuss planning and zoning. So again, I'm just coming back to the way I looked through my notes and I, every person mentioned education and the opportunity not only to do that K through 12, to, to bolster and support education here and how critical that is in regard, and, and utilizing our own Kentucky State University and bolstering our workforce. Because, you know, education goes hand in hand with the ability for, for training. And we hear repeatedly, not just in our community, but across the Commonwealth, across the United States, across the world, how critical to have an available and trained workforce is so that when you are looking for whatever it may be to fit the economic development puzzle within your community, you have individuals who are capable immediately and have specific skills that they automatically bring to the workforce. And all of that is rooted back, you know, from basic math skills to the ability to craft the letter and to write. Those are rooted in education. So I, again, I don't see that on here as a topic and yet something that wasn't discussed as, as much is on here. So I just, I raise it for that, that reason, not that I don't understand why it's on here.
Sure.
Ted, can I ask that you, that you start back with Commissioner Waldridge and, and with Squire Sebastian? And remember that these, we didn't put 20 on here because we expected whatever, like Squire Sebastian said, others to be added that are, that are important. So can we just ask, can you, you want to add one? So I think education should be one we add. And let's, let's continue that kind of list of things. Is that okay?
Yes, and I think that that's part of the process. So that, so that we're, everybody's kind of on the same page here. We need, we, I want to go through these and see if we can agree on the ones that are important. If there's something that's not on here that rose to the level as Squire Sebastian has pointed out, then let's put it on here. And if there's something that needs to come off, then that's fair. That can be, be deferred for another discussion. Commissioner Walters?
Um, well, I just wanted to add, and what in Squire Sebastian, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what I'm gathering and sort of what I get from, from her sharing what she has is that this is supposed to be, you know, county and city coming together for the better good of both communities as a whole community. And we continue to feel like that the magistrates and the commissioners are silenced and we only go by what our leaders are putting out there. And we just want to make sure that this is a one committee and we all have a voice and we want that to be said. And the way that this committee was instructed was for the mayor and the county judge to get together and create what this sort of committee looks like. And for me, that would have been looking at those that are here with us, two from the city board of commission and two from the court. Meaning there would be a, there would be a nomination or a vote for that. And the way that it was presented to the court was there's one spot for you, all of you court members, and the judge automatically took one. And sometimes maybe it's not in the best interest for the judge or the mayor to serve in, in such capacities. And so I think that's, maybe I'm wrong, but I just want to make sure we're moving in the right direction as to why I was sort of turning my sort of vision on economic development. Is it KC DC or is it economic development as a whole? Because our economic development exists also through majority of KC DC right now, if that makes sense, Ted.
Sure, sure. So.
Can I say something? These were just ideas that we put on there as, as talking points to start this. This is not something that we, you know, this is, this is what we have to talk about. We're looking for, that's why we're having this meeting today. We want to hear everyone's ideas. Your representatives of your respective bodies, tell us what you think, you heard, and what you want to talk about on economic development. That's why we're here. It's not my agenda, it's not the judge's agenda. It's our agenda. Let's talk about it and let's figure out what we want to talk about in our future meetings.
So let me just insert at this point that this is, and, and this is always the awkward step of knowing where to start. It just is. And so, so now we have it kind of out on the table. And that's, again, I don't think, it doesn't seem to me that there's an intent to include a topic and not include a topic. There's just something put on the table for everyone to discuss. And we'll, and we'll take that at face value and do that if that's okay with everyone. So economic development, Commissioner Walters, two, kind of two different folks. There's the broad category of economic development, which can encompass everything. And then there's more specific, whether it's downtown or whether it's the economic development authority or whatever it might be. So can we agree that economic development is one of the priority topics? Can we agree on that? Squire Sebastian, is that okay with you? Okay, all right. So then let's look at for just a second, the bourbon industry expansion. Is that another one that you think rises to the level for an initial discussion? And again, this is not an all-inclusive list. We're just trying to identify three or four we can all agree on and focus on those for a little time here.
Uh, and let me ask you, can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
What, all of this kind of falls under economic development? And do you, so do you take these individually? Or do you make it more of a comprehensive look at economic development by putting all of them together? When you start doing one at a time, I'm afraid we're, we could be going through a whole bunch of things, planning and zoning as one, but sometimes people don't see that. But it is part of it. Zoning regulations and, and expansion of, of bourbon and expansion of, of local businesses infield and downtown in the industry and other means. So my question really is, do we put economic development under, under a, a piece of, what we're, of a major piece that we're going to talk about? And then let everything else that should fall under economic development fall in as part of that?
That's one approach. And I, and I think that that's the, the, the challenge and the mission for this meeting and, and this committee. It seems to me is that we can go through a whole laundry. We went through a laundry list that everybody put on the table the last time. And, and I think that they're, all those topics were significant and were important. And, and everybody had an opportunity to kind of have their say of what they thought was important. I think what's this meeting, and, and outcome of this is, what is it that you want to work on? And that is, is economic development? Do you want to talk about it in the broader sense of how the community, how these two entities move forward? Or do you want to put a, create a basket and say, these are the three or four most important things? Let's put them on the table and let's have some discussion around those. Which way do you want to do it? And then I think that's the question for the committee. That's why we're in, talking about process here. Do you want to have an initial discussion about economic development? Then let's do that. If you want to talk about the specific things, let's do that. If you want to talk about what's going to go into the basket for the initial discussion, here's, here are four things that could. Squire Sebastian has suggested education, so that might be another. How does this committee want to proceed? That's the question. What, what, what is most important for you all to talk about? And I'll ask any of you that. I mean, I think y'all have, y'all are the deciders. Every voice.
I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear what could, uh, Commissioner Waldridge and Squire Sebastian.
I would too. Yeah. Squire Sebastian, may I call on you? And if you'd rather go last, that's okay, okay? I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, it's okay. You know, again, one of the critical things that, that I heard in the last discussion, and I've heard from a variety of sources, whether it be me sitting down with manufacturers locally here in the community, whether it be sitting down with small businesses. One of the critical linchpins in economic development and moving that forward is education. And again, I will echo that at our, at our first and only meeting thus far on this topic, education was mentioned by every person. We, we do have a four-year university that, that is a, you know, can be a flagship for our community in that regard. From everything from turning out, and I mentioned this at our last meeting, you know, they have a school of nursing. Well, if you think that, that that is not a, a dire need in the supply chain across the country, not only in our, our, our community, but across the country. You know, how can we partner with those educational institutions? Whether they are within our community or, you know, there are 30 to 40 within 100 mile radius? And again, I mentioned that last time. About how we can work with them as we are looking at things? If we are, for example, reimagining manufacturing. You know, today's manufacturing world is not the same rope manufacturing where you stand in a spot and you produce a widget or a piece of a widget. You are a critical thinker in that organization. And you are looking at smart technologies now. You know, if, if we are in the cradle and kind of in the belt buckle really of the automobile industry, you know, why are we focusing on fabricating carpet? And I'm making up something, fabricating carpet for, for a vehicle. Why are we not latching on to smart technologies that have biomechanics with a vehicle? That have smart technologies that impact lane changes? Uh, you know, w- we are here right in the breadbasket of education within the Commonwealth. And so how can we harness that to pull in that reimagined, reimagined manufacturing? If we want to talk about that, if we want to talk about nursing, I'm happy to again, talk about how do we partner and collaborate? And not only talk about nursing, but talk about how we uh, can be, be vital to manufacturing things that are hard to get a hold of like um, maybe needles? Or uh, how can we be a, a vital cog in the virology segment that is needed across the world? I mean, I think those are the kind of, we're trying to boil down into the nitty gritty, I, I think. And so what kind of community are we going, are we trying to become? In my mind, like uh, the Research Triangle Park, that's what I'd like to see. I'd like for Frankfurt to be the Research Triangle Park uh, of Kentucky, rather than that being in North Carolina. We have the same things that they had in the 50s and 60s. We are, we have interstates running through our community, we're a stone's throw from top flight universities in the country. They stack up across the country. How can we, how can we work with them to harness that ability and, and make ourselves the rea, Research Triangle Park? Um, and, and, and that's where I would like to go.
Let me ask you a question, Squire Sebastian, and I, and this is for the rest of you as well. So um, in terms of, you know, a, one outcome and next step of this, can we agree that um, developing the relationship, partnership and having the conversations then should be, if not the next step, or it could be one of the next two or three steps in identifying who those are and, and figuring out who engages with them? Is it, is it the city and county government together? Is it the mayor and the judge? Is that something that's better handled with economic development? Or is it a matter of bringing several partners together? And I would be interested in, in your, in the others' thoughts on that, Squire Sebastian. And I appreciate your passion about it. It is important. Um, I don't think that we can solve that today, but I think that we, that it can be on the table for um, future partnership discussions. Would that be a fair outcome from this in, in your mind? Would that be okay?
Oh, I don't think we can solve it because I don't think we can resolve that today. But I think that the, in my mind, that is the big picture that we are striving for is this small group to put out there. Uh, or, or that's kind of how I'm, I'm seeing it. You know, how do we work with Kentucky State to create something similar to a, a model laboratory there? Where we are utilizing that to harness the brain power of our youth all across the community, helping to, you know, uh, provide research in the classroom for, for students at Kentucky State who are wanting to become teachers and professors so that we get at these very things. Um, not only does it have to be uh, an educational institution like Kentucky State, but you know, skilled trades and the craftsman, that is the critical need and they can hit the ground running immediately. And so the, the type of things that we, if we're looking at big picture things, I think that is one of the first ones we need to, to really focus on. But again, I, I'm open to hearing other thoughts because I've talked quite a bit and I could talk the entire two, two hours about it.
That's okay. I can tell that you're passionate and I get that way about some topics myself, Squire. So let me, let me, let me uh, set this then kind of to the side and just say this. So that maybe one of the outcomes from our discussion today would be that it is important for the, for the city and the county to figure out a roadmap to partnership when it comes to education and workforce development. That's a big picture kind of thing that a lot, other agencies can take, you know, can get a hold of and run with. And this committee's role in that is identifying and giving the overview of that roadmap. Commissioner Waldrich, how do you think? What do you think about that? Is that a, is that reasonable? One reasonable outcome?
Um, I do. Um, I think, you know, I can agree with Sheri, um, sorry, Squire Sebastian on that. Um, I definitely feel that when we move in a certain direction, there is going to be multiple things uh, that allow for something to move forward. So in education, as she's speaking of Kentucky State and education and things, there's also, you know, we're, we're educating people to have these jobs that we want to bring in through economic development and things of that nature. So we're doing, we're trying to train up our community at the same time as bringing jobs for them to be qualified for and for them to have a live-in meeting. So it all falls in together um, underneath of that. But the one thing that was not on the list that I thought was a high priority and that's important would be the homelessness and drug pandemic uh, that's going on as well in our community. And it was not listed, but I was going to bring that up underneath of others, uh, Mr. Long, so.
Okay. All right. So let me, let me, I'm not, I'm not putting this in a parking lot, so don't let me, don't let me forget where I parked, okay? But, but I heard you and I've got it written down. So let me, let me just get back to just a second to this one point. And Mayor and Judge, if you don't mind to weigh in on this, that, I mean, there, there are multiple conversations, obviously, and there are multiple people that need to be involved with, with education, workforce development and, and jobs training. So can we agree that part of this outcome today is that we agree that there needs to be a roadmap to the partnership? And figuring out how those discussions take place and who they take place among. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I, very reasonable. I, I, I think that then a goal or an objective would be to define how, what you just said on how we.
Yes, the roadmap.
Yes.
The roadmap to the partnership. Mayor, what are your thoughts?
No, I agree. I do. And I think that's a great idea, education and workforce development. I'll just call it workforce development. I think that needs to be one of the pillars or one of the areas that we focus. So uh, I agree with Squire Sebastian on that. And uh, so let's put that on the list and work toward the next steps.
All right.
I don't know, are we, are we going to try to rank these today or are we going, or just, just define the ones that we want to focus?
Well, it seems to me, and, and I told you at the beginning, and I really do, I know this because I've done this a gazillion times, not just facilitating, but in my own life, is that this conversation is, is one of the most awkward because we don't know exactly where to start and where to end, okay? And so we made, we took a big step with this. There's synergy around this. And we've now identified that there needs to be a roadmap to this partnership and we need to identify who those people are. And those are some of the next steps, whether this committee or that's handed off to a subcommittee or a different group of people. That's a big step. Whether we can get to all of them and rank them or not, I don't know, Mayor. But let's, let's see if we can get through another one. How about that? Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. So this is kind of process here. All right. So let's talk about a little bit about um, i- it doesn't matter to me. Whi- which one do you want to talk about next? Do you, do you want to talk about the, the, the expansion of tourism? Is that one that rises to the level, the bourbon, bourbon tourism and that sort of thing? Or is it, is it, you know, industrial development or downtown development? Or, you know, what, what are these areas that, that need, that need the focus and, and rise to the level of the big economic development picture for the city and the county? That you can have influence over. Some of these things you can't, you can't control. Some, some you can. So what's the next topic? Squire Sebastian, you, you had, you, you got the first one up there and we got it fleshed out. So Bill, I'm going to ask uh, uh, Commissioner Waldrich, do you have, you said, you mentioned homelessness and, and the uh, drug addiction and pandemic and those sorts of things. Um, you want to expand a little on that? Does that, does that rise to a higher level than, than some of the other things that were brought up at the previous meeting? Is it rise to the level of this, the, the workforce development, education piece?
I think that it falls under as a subgroup under work, uh, workforce development uh, or education, um, because it's needed. But I also think that is a huge, um, a huge issue that we do need as a community, as a city and a county to um, to push forward. Um, you know, when I look at that, I look at everything on the list and it, and it says KC DC, parks and tourism, planning and zoning, bourbon industry expansion, and then others. Um, you know, these are broad things that are going to help the economic development and help our community overall, moving things forward. But what about the personal, the healthy life, the wellbeing of our community? I don't really see those initiatives underneath of those that are out, if that makes sense. The closest thing that I see is maybe parks, um, that would be a healthy life, a lifestyle. My goal is not just for the economic development of my community, but it's also the he, the health value and a quality of life for my community. And so I, I feel like that's sort of, that's why I think that homelessness and drug pandemic needs to really fall underneath of the education and being able to touch our individuals, I guess. Um, my thing right now, uh, per se is definitely economic development and KC DC and getting our organizations to work for us.
Okay. All right. So let me just recap what I heard. The first part was, let's take homelessness and a, a, a drug addiction and, and those sorts of issues and put that under as a part of the, the, the stool that makes up workforce development and education and, and, and taking care of that, that sector. Is that correct?
I think that would be, yes, quality of life.
Yeah, okay. So we can add that to, all right. So then you brought up something that's a little bit different and I think a little broader than just bourbon industry expansion. And that is health and wellness and active neighborhood activities and, you know, reasons for people to come here and do things and that sort of.
We, we can expand our bourbon. I mean, they're doing a great job. They're, they're expanding bourbon and they come in for these tours and they're gone. We as a community, as a city and a county, we have to keep them here. They need to shop. They need to eat here. They need to stay all night, but not go to Lexington or for sales or somewhere else and stay. We've got to come up with a way to keep them here. So our bourbon industry is expanding, but what are we doing? Uh, you know, to keep them here and giving them another reason to be in Frankfurt?
So you're really talking about enhanced experiences, economic, economic and quality of life. Community development experience. Is that correct?
Yes, sorry, I keep muting because I'm afraid there's an echo. Um, yes, that is correct. And I think Sheri was going to add something.
Yes, Squirt Sebastian.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Long. I, I did have a question in regard to that. The way it is phrased on, on this agenda, it is bourbon industry expansion. So uh, for those who put that on the agenda, are you indicating that we need to seek out additional uh, aspects of the bourbon industry and bring them into the community? Are you suggesting that we work with the existing uh, uh, you know, bourbon producers here in the community? I know in the past, you know, when, when Buffalo Trace chooses, I mean, they choose to, to roll out a new line or, uh, you know, I, I'm just trying to make sure I understand the, the phrasing of that. And, and I don't want to get hung up on the words, but when I saw expansion, I didn't know if, if whoever put the agenda together was thinking about, do we want to bring a cooperage in? Is that part of it? You know, are we? So I, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what that means. And, and whatever those comments are will help me with that. Thank you very much in advance.
Yeah, thank you.
And I can follow up on that. It means, you know, i- it's meant to be broad because it could be tourism. It could be affiliate industries like cooperages, like, you know, clasman, you know, the bottles, everything. So it's, it's whatever we want it to mean. And it is, you know, it, it's just expansion overall. Could be distilling, could be tourism, could be bottling, whatever.
And, and that gets back to, you know, one of the things that, that I talked about before with Kentucky State University. You know, they have a, a program in distilling, you know, an educational program that teaches you how to do that and you get an actual credential in that. So that could, could potentially factor in here. I just wasn't sure if we were talking about the raw materials that our community could provide, if it was also part of how we turn out professionals for this industry and say, look, we are a cradle. If you're looking for it in Scotland, we here in Frankfurt, Kentucky are the cradle for any type of distilled spirits, whether it is bourbon, whiskey, whatever it might be. So I just, you know, because I think that is a, as a key, you know, we're one of one. We're one of one on so many levels. We're the capital, one of one. You know, I could, we could all go on days, but I, but I think that gets to what I'm just trying to make sure I understand these topical areas. Because we could turn out so, potentially partner with Kentucky State University and market that as a strategy worldwide, like you would if you were a blacksmith. It's not just the horse industry. There's ornamental iron in castles in England. And people from here are called over there to work on that. So it's trades, it's crafts, it's that kind of thing. So I was just trying to make sure I understood if, if you were saying we're trying to expand the distilleries within our community, if we're trying to bring uh, side, uh, I guess side businesses in that could, could assist them? Or if we're trying to turn out individuals through a partnership with Kentucky State? So I'm just trying to make sure because me, I can see it all happening, but I don't want to put words in whoever developed the agenda's mouth on that.
No, and that's again, Squire Sebastian, this is why we're having this meeting. This is supposed to be as broad and, and this is, and this, if we agree that expanding the bourbon industry, however we define that, is what we want, then that's what, either a subgroup or the net, or we could have a bigger meeting about that and really, you know, go into depth in all those topics. Because, you know, like you've got a lot of great ideas there and that's exactly what, you know, this meeting is a, well, this meeting's about. Is that the, you know, do we all agree that we can work together on working to promote the expansion of the bourbon industry? Is that important to us?
What a.
Sounds like it is.
Well, and so, so let me just, and if somebody else wants to speak, certainly you can take the floor. But I, so just to kind of consolidate what I keep hearing, and I, I think this is part of my role is I keep hearing that the bourbon industry is a major player in the community and that there are lots of stubs off of that. There's the expansion of the industry itself. There's the expansion of the support services and satellite industries that support the bourbon industry. There's a whole group of people that come in, a whole other thing that has to do with tourism and the experience. And then there's the whole, there's another subset that involves the things associated with staying more than one night in a community to see one thing. And that, that's, i- i- if I'm, if I'm looking at, listening to the conglomerate thoughts, I'm hearing all of those things coming off a discussion of the primary industry, of the bourbon industry. It attracts a lot of things and Frankfurt has the ability in Franklin County to leverage that into so many more things that can have an economic impact on the community. Is that, i- is that what you're saying? And that's what I'm hearing. Are y'all hearing? Is that what y'all are hearing?
I, I'd like to say one other piece that has not been said, but I think is vitally important. We have the largest distributor of bourbon in the world in Franklin County. That's Jim Beam. In Franklin County, it has over a hundred different liqueurs, white liquors, different types of, of liqueurs that are being bottled in Franklin County. But it doesn't have a uh, gift shop, a tourism uh, center. The expansion part of this, in my mind, was that we do what we can to bring, to uh, get Jim Beam to bring a tourism sector into Franklin County, just like what Buffalo Trace has done. I think that would be huge for our community. So that, that, I was more in tune to the expansion part. That's my fault on that one.
I, no, I, I understand. So you're talking about expanding the experience?
The, the bourbon experience that everybody is, is, that is uh, the top tourist attraction anywhere in Kentucky.
Yep. I got you. Okay. All right. So do we have general agreement among the four? That this is another area that should be added to the list for future discussion and, and fleshing out? This could have an impact that both the city and the county could, could agree on and work on together? Anyone object? Are we okay? All right. All right. So um.
Ted, wait a minute. I, I, the, the mayor and I were thumbs up. I never saw whether Commissioner Waldrich or, or uh, Squire Sebastian are in favor. I, we all need to be, it needs to be a consensus, if that's okay.
Yes, that's fine. Are y'all, are you okay with that, Commissioner Waldrich? Is there a, any part of that that you disagree with or it's not as important or what, what are your thoughts on it?
Um, I think that it's important. I think it can fall underneath the tourism. What it doesn't, what it, on the side of expansion under economic development, the rest falls underneath of tourism. So for us to have a subcommittee just to focus on that part, I don't think is my number one priority right now because it would fall underneath of economic development and it would fall underneath of tourism in the other two areas that we have.
Okay. That's Squire Sebastian, what about you?
Um, I, I do think it's important and, you know, we've all rattled off a variety of, of ways that uh, participating in this element of, of industry could be vital, uh, to the community because it already has so many, we already have so many pieces of this in our toolbox here. You know, everything from the education to the actual manufacturing of what I would be, uh, want to understand is, is how this would be, um, put before like this committee. I mean, what are we going to call? Kind of how are we going to, uh, focus on this or what are we going to call it? Um, just, just to help whoever's going to pick these pieces up. Because we've talked about a variety of things with bourbon. I- if it's just the industry in general, you know, I think there are multiple pieces that are that we've talked about today. And that it's not just the, the tourism experience. You know, because it is in, in infusing, you know, our tax base with them being here. Uh, it's infusing our tax base with the warehousing, uh, you know, and it has to be aged for quite some time. You know, so there are, uh, if it's a, you know, spinoff industries like we mentioned, whether it's, you know, cooperages, whether it becomes, uh, you know, old growth, uh, you know, woods that are out maybe in Bald Knob that are going to be used as part of the cooperage. And you could create your own tree farm and, and literally in the backyard, you've got all of it here in, in Franklin County. So just help me with that a little bit because in my mind, again, I could talk for two hours about what I think bourbon could do, uh, as we all could, as we all could.
Okay. So let me come back to Commissioner Waldrich, if it's okay. Uh, Commissioner, and let me ask you a couple of questions. Is that okay?
Sure.
So, um, there, you know, when we can cast a, the, the committee can cast a wide net about tourism and economic development. And I think we can all agree on it. It covers, that covers a multitude of things. Um, do you think that a working committee or a group of folks that are tasked with looking and exploring at all the aspects that the bourbon industry has and could have in Frankfurt and Franklin County is worthy of devoting time to, um, as one of the points of this working group? Or is that, or is that just narrowing it just too far for you?
I mean, I'm so confused this meeting right now. Um, I, you know, I, I think that we could. The goal here, I would assume for the meeting, I, I'm, I'm over the agenda, but I, I just want to focus on what our goal is. Our goal is to pick the top four or five things that we want to move forward as a city and as a county, and hopefully everything that Sherry's saying can be said in a subcommittee to break it down on the needs and the necessities of each subcommittee. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that's the things that I'm looking for. Yes. Could it be its own committee? It really could, but we really need, uh, back to your point, Ted, is one, two, three, four. What is our first priority? What is our second priority? And what is our third priority? And if bourbon falls in at two, or if it falls in at four or one, that's where it falls in at. If we want to have, you know, our own area, we forget that, you know, just because we come together as a city and, and county, the city has its own sort of subcommittee for different things. We have Penny Peebler. And she goes out and she helps with these relationships. And that's her job to go out and make relationships and get this information. So we have someone working in our community that can also do that in the city. So we can come together as a county and definitely use her services. So, you know, yes, is it, is it a necessity? Definitely. Cause bourbon is huge right now, but they're really leading the way on their own right now. We just need to be workable with them. We've got to give them something else to want to build in Frankfurt.
All right. So let's, so then let's, let's think about this. Perhaps we have now reached a point in the discussion where we need to make a pivot and let's just talk about what is the most important thing for this committee to work on? What is that? Commissioner Waldrich, uh, Waldrich, would you want to put something out on the table? What's the most important?
Yes. Most important is definitely economic development and we're talking about it. But most important of what we have to talk about within ourselves is put the big elephant out there is our working and our leadership communication to get these things done. Um, you know, KC DC is huge for economic development. It is one of the organizations that we pay into to represent us and to lead us through. Um, you know, and here and there, it's been thrown in the paper for it not to be funded. It's been thrown fingers pointed at it and everything else right now, Mr. Long. And for, for me, I, I look at it like since I've been commissioner, has there been a moment that we've actually sat down with KC DC with city and county and give them goals? And for me, we have to utilize KC DC because we can talk about economic development. Um, right here as a big picture city and county, but my job isn't to go and find someone right now or have those conversations because I'm not educated in some of those conversations. Uh, does the county have their own person that's going to go out other than KC DC? That's the goal. Do we hire someone to go out and look at these things? Like we have Penny Peebler. You know, what is equal on the county side, you know, for them to work with KC DC. And right now, we don't even have a full board for KC DC. And does KC DC really know what we want as a city and a county together as goals? I don't think so. I've been asking for a meeting since a new board came on to meet with KC DC. So they know exactly what we're going to do. I'm not saying the executive director of KC DC is doing everything right or wrong. But what I'm saying is if you give someone goals and objectives, we can hold them accountable and we'll have something, something to measure them by because that's the status we need to go. So economic is important and we need to solidify on how we use KC DC to benefit the city and the county. We have three board members that represent through, that are nominated by the judge. We have three board members that are nominated by our mayor, and then we have a deciding vote, which is your executive director, which is employee. Right? So it's a very thin line of politics of, of, of mayor and judge sort of, because they get to choose who they want on this. Now, mind you that our mayor has reached out and has spoken with us, uh, I think individually and, and what we think, and I've agreed with the mayor. And I told him, I think he needs to take his sweet time in doing this because right now we can't throw anybody else in the fire until we know what to expect from KC DC and what they expect from us. Um, so I think to me, let's just put the big elephant out there. That's what needs to be. The board needs to be constructed of people who care about this community and want to grow this community and growth of the economic development and not personal incentives or personal, uh, pockets. Um, and people like Frankfurt Plant Board need to be on KC DC, people that are connected who benefit from the growth. So Frankfurt Plant Board, they want to bring in new people. They want to bring in industrial. Why? They want to sell more energy. So why aren't people like that serving on our KC DC board to help us bring in these people to work with the executive director and move it in the right direction? I've worked with, uh, the executive director and if I've asked her for something or I've, or I've told her something or what have you, she goes and does it. But if you just throw a puzzle on the table and you turn it over where you don't see anything, you're not going to get very far. You gotta see the other side of the piece of the puzzle to see where it fits. We have to decide on, is KC DC here to work with the city and the county and how we want them to work for our community? So let's just talk about it. That's what needs to be a workable. Like you said, Mr. Ted, uh, Mr. Long, we have to make that maybe an offset subgroup, but it has to be talked about in the structure. Period. We have to take the politics out of our KC DC board and out of this community for us to serve the community the way that we should.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate you sharing your thoughts. I do. Yeah, sometimes you have to put it out there. So this sounds to me like something that, um, is, should be on the agenda for a future discussion and, and needs to be worked through. It's not going to be resolved today. I think everybody would, would agree with that. But that's something that's important. Mayor?
And that is, it's on the list. It's the first thing on the list. So it is one of the things that we need to talk about. And, and to Commissioner Waldrich's point, and some of the other things that we talk about, whether it's bourbon or planet, you know, those things will inform what KC DC does. If they know what we come out of this, what our priorities are, they'll have a better understanding of what we're looking for. And of course, some of these topics, it falls under economic development in KC DC's purview. Some of these topics will fall under tourism's purview. But if they know we're looking at it, and if they know we're talking about it and we're meeting about it, they're going to, they're going to know what we expect. So I do think it isn't, you know, I think KC DC is its own topic. It's its own subgroup, what have you. It's its own meeting. But some of the other things will fall under, uh, their umbrella as well. And I think structure is a big part of it. And I think it is, uh, you know, from the city side, uh, we want to make sure that our, uh, goals and objectives are part of the, you know, the strategic vision and the mission. And, uh, I'm, I'm sure at a future meeting to discuss KC DC, we could talk about strategies and tactics to actually achieve some of these goals. And I think that's, uh, one of the things that maybe I haven't asked enough questions and I don't know exactly what those strategies and tactics are.
All right. Judge or Squire Sebastian?
Ted, I, I, I want to remind everybody and I just say this, uh, that this is a process and that we're all here for the first time talking through it. So we're trying to feel our way through. Catricia Waldrich, I, I really respect what she just said. I think it's, she just went straight to the point. But we were all trying to get to the point. And every piece of, everything we've talked about is a subset of the point of, which is economic development. So I, I do appreciate what, where, uh, Commissioner's coming from and, and, and I agree. But we can't lose sight of what are all the pieces of economic development in our community that make our community what it is and make it strong. But most importantly, we are going to have to have a strong economic development uh, program to get where we want to be. So I, that's about all I want to say about that. But I do appreciate you, uh, Commissioner for your getting right to the point. Words.
Very well. Thank you, Judge. Squire Sebastian, do you have anything that you want to add to, 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 to this point? Okay. All right. So it seems to me that, um, this is, this is a big point, that there needs to be a, a discussion and part of this process needs to be to work out the relationship and understand what each other's uh, a, a, agenda and goals are and, and resolve some of these things and, and open the dialogue and communication. Will everyone, can everyone agree with that? That's what I, that's what I heard. Okay. Squire Sebastian, is that okay with you? Okay. Mayor? Did you put, okay, we're good. All right. So let's I think it's reasonable to assume that's big number one. That, that's a, that's a big, big chunk of this. All right. Um, so secondly, what is a second priority for this committee? What do you want to come out of this? What needs to come out of this? Well, so let me do something different. Let me back up and say, if I'm looking at what the, the discussion that's gone on previously, that one of the things that this committee could discuss are the various ways that the city and the county together can partner with education and workforce entities to work on some of these areas that were identified under that big category. Is that fair to say? Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's the second, that's a second priority, identifying the partnerships and, and determining how to have those, set those discussions. Because that's going to, that's going to involve both the city, the county, economic development folks. It's going to involve education partner. It's going to involve a lot of folks. So that's a pretty big chunk, I think, for this committee to figure out how to move forward on. Is there, is there another big one like this? Is there a third one? Are these, are, are these two enough for you to chew on, as they used to say? Commissioner? Or Judge, whoever wants to go.
I, I think, I, I think as we get into this, we're just going to expand and expand because as, as you see, we spent an hour already. And we've come up with different subsets under the heading economic development and it, and it were working together as a community, um, appointing the right people to book, to the board, uh, helping uh, the director work on the goals and objectives that, uh, that we lay out as well as the board lays out, that I think that it's all going to come into place. But it, we're, we're just beginning to get into this big issue. It's going to have lots of subsets to it.
Okay. So is it a more productive way to spend the balance of the time that's left? And I don't, and I know everybody's got busy lives, so I want to be respectful of the time. But so, so what comes next for this committee? If, if, if we, if we agree even just on those two priorities, those are two great big ones. So what, what is the next step for this committee? Commissioner?
Um, I was wanting to add, you know, before we say next committee, that, that it's just these two is, I was wanting to add, um, back to sort of, uh, Squire Sebastian earlier with planning and zoning and, and why it was on here and things of that nature. And you know, that may fall underneath of the economic development. It will in some way, shape or form. But I completely agree, uh, when, uh, the judge had brought it up once again. I know some others have brought up the idea as well of having one office. I've spoke with, uh, Magistrate Mueller as well, Squire Mueller, and he's all for, you know, maybe having one place, one stop shop for everyone as far as planning and zoning. Even having maybe a satellite office outside of the city that gives people more parking, easier to access. Having a, a satellite office, uh, maybe something that we need to discuss. Um, as well as, you know, planning and zoning leads right up there. When we bring in economic development, we bring in people who are building, people that are rehabbing. They have to have these permits. And I know sometimes it's not easy to talk with or changing things or actually, um, enforcing of these things in planning and zoning because they've been a certain way for so long. But I think in time, we really do need to support our staff. We have to support our staff in, 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 uh, planning and zoning to go out to give permits, to uphold permits and to enforce the zoning and planning that we have and not underhand, uh, their judgment or their, uh, their enforcement by, because of people we know or politics or what have you. It's time that we get back to serving the people in our community and leaving the politics out of it. And so for me in this area, you know, yes, developers may not be happy, but what I can say is that they will gain respect for us if we set standards and keep to them and enforce them. If we continue to slide under and let things continue to slide by for developers or what have you, we're, as a city and a county, we're never going to have the respect that we need for people to want to come and work with us because they know things can change in a drop of a dime for each individual, depending on who you are. We have to set standards. We have to allow our staff the power, uh, to be able to lead and, and make these decisions and support them. And that leads into if we're bringing people in, they need to know our standards. Um, you know, it, it's not going to be popular. But our community has to be safe with this planning and zoning. We need someone that's going to come in, that's going to put sprinklers in right. We need people who are going to have plumbing in right. And we need buildings to be built on a standard that we want our people in our community, uh, protected. And so that I, I'll agree, uh, it does need to be underneath of the economic development and a portion of it. But we have to set, set aside these unethical politics and keep doing and allow this, the staff to do their job and not pressure from us as leaders or, um, commission or, or, or magistrates or what have you. We have to let them do their job and support them if we want them to do their job. So I think that's important as well. It doesn't need to be slack.
Okay. So let me ask a question, Commissioner, because I, I think that in, in reality, what I'm hearing are really two points. One is the, 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 the function and purpose of planning and zoning and code enforcement and, and permitting and all those things. And that is a part of economic development. But there's another piece that you're bringing up that I hear, and that is one stop shopping for business and building and development. And, you know, this proximity of city and county, um, offices related to permitting and all that, which creates greater efficiency and should hopefully, um, remove any silos that might exist and, and, and promote uh, uh, development and, and discussion in a cohesive kind of way. So I, I was hearing two things. I want to make sure that that's correct. One is directly related to economic and community development. And the other is related to efficiency and coming together to, to work, actually work together. Is that correct?
Yes, and with the one-stop shop, as the judge had stated in our last meeting, if I'm not mistaken, was that, you know, we have people, city people that live inside the city limits that go to the county office and they send them over to our office. And then they go to the county office and they live on the outside. So it's vice versa. So if we could put them in one building, instead of having to drive from one side of, uh, the, the river to the other, trying to find parking, it could just be a walk across the hall. Oh, you're on the wrong side of the hall, go across the hall. And it, they don't have to move their vehicle, they're not searching for, for tra, uh, parking. And so, you know, and another thing, maybe we can't have a satellite office as well that will help with parking. Being that parking, you know, is hard, a little hard to navigate around the area of the county and the city. But that, that's what we want. We want to make it easier for them. I know that we're implementing the app and I'm hoping the county will also do the same. And hopefully soon being able to pay certain things online. That's going to help with our city to be able to navigate better and getting the things they need done. So yes, I'd rather walk across the hallway to the county or to the city than having to move my car and find another parking space.
Okay, so, so i- in, in dividing this up and, and splitting it out, what we're really looking at is, is the enforcement piece and the, and permitting and all that is its own thing. But the bigger, the bigger thing is that, that perhaps would rise to the level of economic development and workforce and education would be the efficiency of acting together and working together as city and county on planning and zoning kinds of issues. Is that fair? I mean, that's what I'm hearing. Yes, Squire Sebastian?
I think before we get into consolidation of city-county services, I think we need to look at, um, the, the procedures and the standards for planning and zoning. Because I, I, what I hear is not so much, I don't know where to go. It is, I don't understand the rules that are on the table. And if I understood those better, I would come better prepared to the planning and zoning office. Because me coming back two or three times to, to do something that, uh, to, to check off one box on, on a, a checklist, you know, uh, is, is the critical thing. It is the, for me, it's more, uh, developing standards, uh, and, and processes that are the same across the board. I think that, for me, I just want to devolve it down to the process of getting it. Because obviously that's where it begins and ends. If you don't do A, B, or C, you can't advance your application for whatever you're trying to do. And so I'd rather start with the fundamental. How do we get that process, um, more where it's understood and, and devolved down to the, to the nuts and bolts where people understand that better? But that, that's, that's where I would prefer to start.
I got you.
Can I, may I, uh, piggyback on what Squire said? You would be very proud then, Squire, of what, what's being done by, by the county, uh, planning and zoning. Uh, because when you do come in here, you are given a checklist and you are shown this is what you need to do. And on top of that, we do have quite a few people come in here because we're located in the city thinking we are the planning and zoning for city development. That does happen. And we do help. We help city plan, we help people that need, have needs in the city as well. So there is a checklist. I know the city has done the same thing, is giving a checklist to people. This is, you have to complete this, this and this, and this is the process. But planning and zoning itself is not easy. It's, it, it's very complicated. There are rules and regulations, as Commissioner Waldrich said. There's lots of things that have to be done as part of planning and zoning that make it difficult. Our job should be to make it as simple and as easy as possible. But being rigid on those things that help save your life and help you build the right product. So there's a lot of variables involved. And I do think our, both the city and county planning and zoning are doing, uh, the best they can. Can they do better? We can all do better. But, uh, putting them together would be a first step in trying to make it easier, easier for our, uh, developers and our community.
Okay. So I, I, yes, Mayor, go ahead.
I was going to, you know, and I think what the judge is saying is, when you say put them together, you mean in the same space.
That's exactly right.
And sharing some services.
I didn't say consolidate, I didn't say merge.
Not consolidate, not merge. I said it. I just, uh, sharing, uh, space and services to make it easier. I, I, I think that planning and zoning, you know, maybe it's not of the same level of importance as KCDC or workforce development. But I think it's something we can work on. And that's part of what we're talking about today. What can we work on? Some of these topics may be, you know, it may take us a while to, to work well together on. But this seems like something that is doable. And I think it's, it should be on our list still. And for those, we'll have commissioners, we'll have magistrates that might gravitate toward this and, and, and want to, and want to meet about this. I, I think it's, should still be on the list. And I was going to add one. I think parks and, you know, subset of that would be sports tourism. We have a parks master plan that the city has just completed. The county has, has done a similar plan, the Lakeview Park. We both spent, combined hundreds of thousands of dollars on these plans. I do think that we need to be working together to make sure that, that, uh, they complement each other. So I think that that is something that we could, we should work on together.
Commissioner? Thank you, Mayor.
I, I would have to agree with the mayor as well. I know, um, he's, um, supportive in this. Um, and he knows, I think he has his commission behind him in supporting the parks expansions as well as, um, sport tourism. And as he stated, you know, the city has just spent, uh, a little over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for our parks master plan. Uh, the county spent, what, a hundred and eighty-two-ish maybe thousand dollars on their plan?
Hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Hundred and eighty-seven. Um, and so we're looking at that to say, you know, it's one park for the county. And, and could we have merged that county with the city and maybe not have spent a hundred and eighty-seven thousand? It could have just been added to our hundred and twenty or maybe bumped it up to a hundred and twenty-five in this. So, so when we look at it, are we being, uh, good stewards of our money in the city and the county? And can that be one partnership where we come together and we make something larger? If it's about sport, sport tourism, there shouldn't be a city and a county line. It's sport tourism for our county and for our city. And so if they're going to be doing something for an indoor facility, then we need to know that. We need to be partnered on that to see what they're offering. So if we're going to do something similar or something, we're not just copying what they're doing or offering the same services. We want to expand the services so we can cover a larger footprint. But also Ted, I'll have to go back and talk about the elephant in the room. Again, it's communication, it's politics. We have to get over that. I mean, dealing with, I mean, recently when, uh, we were doing our, um, master plan, you know, we, the young lady that was working with, uh, Brownstetter, um, and Carol then, she continued to receive phone calls from past directors saying, do this, do that, do this. We have one park director in our city, and that is Sean Pickens. And I, man, I tell you, I don't know how many times I've pulled Sean aside and said, man, I'm sorry. I can't wait till you can just be parks director. Instead of feeling like there's other people over him controlling what he's doing or setting aside what he's doing. The young lady that worked for Brownstetter, she was so frustrated in hearing from past directors over and over what to do about the city, she ended up quitting from Brownstetter, right where she left. So if someone's not even to work with us through another company, and this is where we go, who wants to work with us? We have to stop the politics to get through on what's better for this city and this county. We have to stop letting pass people who've got, that's why we are where we are. Past people have let us get here. They've let our parks deteriorate over all these years. Yes, there's been, we've gotten awards and things like that. But let's talk about the elephant in the room. Look where our parks are and how much things, we needed new toilets in Dolly Graham Park. We didn't need a new director to tell us that. We just needed someone to do it. And we have to talk. So what can we do? We can come together. Let's communicate on these parks. I ask, uh, I sat at the table for the parcels B and C with Judge and, and, and Mayor May at the time. And I brought this up. We should take over this parks. Give them positions and come on over and let's take it over and be one park system. And it was like, just quiet. We have to make hard decisions. And sometimes I may not get the glory. Mayor May, Mayor, uh, Lane Wilkerson now, Judge, may not get the glory and that's okay. It's teamwork. Our community don't care whose name goes on a building or whose name goes on a park. That's what we need to stop getting to. Get it done. Give them a park to play in. Give them something that people are going to come in and, and go to DaVinci's and buy pizza and things of that nature for our community. And stop worrying about names on buildings, names on parks and who's getting the credit. I don't care. I'm here to serve the community and we have to do better with this park. And we have to let our staff do their work. That's why we hired, uh, Sean Pickens to come in and do the work. And for him to be handcuffed to people in the past and past politics is absolutely ridiculous. We have to get through it.
Okay. Let me ask a question here, um, that it seems to me that there's a lot of, uh, a, a lot of energy around, uh, the parks and, and the communication and partnership aspects of that. Seems like that that's kind of a running theme through the whole thing is that, you know, I, I will, I will give kudos where they're deserved. And, and, and the fact that the city and county are sitting down and even having the discussion is enough for applause for me. I'll just tell you that. And so sometimes this is, you know, these are, these are uncomfortable truths that, that we talked about. The fact of the matter is that in, in communities, in, in local government, state government, politics plays a role. Making sure that it plays the proper role is always the challenge. And so I think anything can be talked through. And if you're all willing to do that, I think you all can solve and resolve some of these things. It seems to me that, uh, I, I don't, I, I don't ever want to come across in, in my role as facilitator of being on a side or not on a side. I don't ever want to come across as cutting off discussion or, or prolonging one more minute than it needs to be. But it seems to me that there are four things that have come out and, and that this committee seems to have some energy around pursuing as next steps. And so coming up with, uh, a mechanism or structure, or if it's within this committee, to talk about economic development and getting folks on the same page and clearly defining what the, 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 the mission, the, the vision, the goals, the strategies are, and working together and collaboratively is, to me, obviously, the number one thing. The second thing is all, is the synergies around education, workforce, and aligning those partners to be working together to create the kind of workforce and at the same time, looking at quality of life, uh, that comes in from, and benefits from that. The third thing that I heard was one that can fall, and, and this seemed to me to be the fourth priority. So I'm, I'm calling it the third one because it was the third in order. And that is that the city and county could, has done quite a bit, but could do more in finding efficiencies, interlocal agreements, working collaboratively, even physically locating within proximity of each other to create more efficiency and service and to benefit the public so that they're not going to multiple buildings in multiple areas to accomplish one task. And I can assure you, I have been through that myself, trying to do some add-on a patio in my home. So I understand that feeling. And I, and I think that that's a worthy goal. Uh, and then the fourth one, which in my estimation seems like it was really number three, uh, that is leveraging the parks plans that have already been created by the city and county and figuring out a step-by-step path for implementing the pieces of that plan. And then making the decision and sticking with it. And so I think that that seems to be something that this, this task force or this committee, uh, could move further. And my question is twofold. One, do you agree with that assessment? Did I hear that correctly? And are those four things that you all can agree to work on? And then the second piece is, if that's correct, then what is the next step? Is it scheduling another meeting and picking one? Or is it branching off and, 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 you know, trying to resolve them multiple ways with multiple folks? I don't know. I mean, that, that's your all's decision. So let's go with the first question. Are those the four areas? And have I stated adequately, fairly?
I think those, I think those four are great to start with. Um, and I think other things will come as, as, as we continue to move forward. But I don't want to slight, uh, and I know, uh, Mayor Wilkerson will probably agree, is our recycle issue. I know we did not bring it up, but recycling is a huge issue for us. I'm sure it's an issue for the county. And so that's something we do need to talk about as well. But like I said, things will continue to come up. But I do think those four are a good start. But, um, if I speak for our commission, I think putting recycle on there overall would be, uh, a plus as well, whether that is pairing up with the county for a facility, uh, or looking for better rates and how we transport.
That could fall under, uh, uh, Commissioner, the city-county work, working together because, uh, I do think solid waste, um, and with the city and the county should be, should have a better partnership and, and be closer together. So that, you, that could fit under number three if you wanted it to.
I think that'd be great. I think we need to understand the difference between partnerships and working together versus merge or things of that nature. And so that's what we're trying to do. Let's work together. But I agree, I think that'd be fine on a subgroup to talk about.
Commissioner, I don't mean to interrupt, I, I, but I do want to just stop for a second and, and understand that we're not trying to, 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 to be limited and nothing else will ever come up. That's not what this is. We, you have to start somewhere and then as things start moving forward, you can add other things to the list. We can incorporate this under, I, I'm fine to do that. I think that'd be fine. Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I was going to say, it, it, it originally was on that list. Recycling was, and waste management, and, and, and back to the homelessness and affordable. That was also considered, but I, I guess we were looking more at the economic development umbrella. And the other things seem more like economic development.
It's fair. Squire Sebastian, any thoughts? Are we okay? Are we on the right page?
Uh, I think as, as maybe topics to, uh, jump off on, uh, as you said, economic development was the driver for this entire, uh, process that we've been to, uh, in two separate meetings. So, so that really is the overarching conversation point. Uh, the other topics, I guess, really fall under those type of things to advance economic development. Certainly education and workforce training. Um, and, uh, what was it? Leveraging, uh, some assets within the community. Uh, parks, I think, was mentioned. And then talking about, uh, I, I guess I'll call it services that each provide and, and how they're best provided, I guess, right? Is that kind of?
Yeah, we were talking about, yes, interlocal agreements and efficiencies. Not merging, but working collaboratively so that they're, they're more accessible and easier to access for the public.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood those correctly.
It is not, it is not, it is not merging.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So now the second part of the question, that is, what is the path forward? Does this, does this working group want to give some thought to the, the four areas we've identified and flesh out some detail? Or do you want to hand it off and work in a different structure or what? So this is not, this is your all's decision. What, what are your thoughts on it? Mayor?
I think, uh, each of these topics deserves its own meeting, its own space. The question is, do we do this as, uh, our working group? Do we appoint new representatives to be a part of a working group to focus on these subtopics? Or do we take this to the joint, you know, each, each topic get its own conversation in the big joint meeting with everyone?
That is, that's, that's the hundred thousand dollar question.
Uh, I think my, my vote would be that each topic gets a, a subgroup and, and, uh, you know, a smaller group that can get together, a city and the county, and they come back with recommendations or strategies and tactics for whatever that, you know, whether it's parks, whether it's KCDC, whether it's planning and zoning.
Okay.
Patricia Waldrich has been wanting to say something.
Go ahead, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Um, I, I, I would agree eventually. I think that we do need, uh, definitely our subcommittee meetings for each of these. But I think now, um, I'm, I was brought on, on my commission, so I'm one of four. So I think that these, what we spoke about needs to go back. I know, I'm sure probably some of them are listening, but for the record, they need to go back to our prospective commission and court. they need to go back to our prospective commission and court, give them overview of what we've discussed and what we think the top four are. Making sure there is an agreement from the court and making sure there's an agreement from the commission and our complete board in a meeting and it's on the record for us to say, hey, we agree, we want to move forward with this. Or maybe they want to change some things. And so I think for us, we're just representing our board today. And I think we need to go back and present this to our board to see if the rest of our board actually agrees with us or wants to change some things. Then from there, I think that meeting is set to say, we, we do agree on this. We want to set separate subcommittees as the mayor shared for different people to be nominated or placed on those committees. And I think there needs to be a pro, a process for these subcommittees and for these committees, whether that's through resolution or something. I'm sure Ms. Ross could share a little bit on that, but I think when we're getting into these committees and the way that they should be staffed or, or there, I think that we need to, to come through to do something of that nature, to have it solidified in what the purpose is for that subcommittee, what our duties are, what our responsibilities are, and who will serve and how long.
Squire Sebastian, how do you feel about the next steps?
I would agree with some of the things that, that Commissioner Waldrich said about taking this back to our respective bodies. I know I've sat on committees of the fiscal court where things didn't pass out of committee and yet someone chose to put things on the final agenda for the fiscal court. So it really needs to go back to the full body because again, it, you know, this is sort of a, a, a working group and that's what committees really do. They're a working group. And then they need to take it back to the full body for them to say, you know, because some of them may not have the benefit today of listening to this conversation. So they may not understand fully when we talk about certain topics that come back, the, the full breadth of what was discussed as part of that topic. So I would just advocate to take it back to the body.
Okay. Judge, thank you, Squire. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Judge?
I, 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 I don't, I think it's a great idea to let our governing bodies know that these are the four areas that we're going to discuss. But I do think we had, we and the fiscal court, I don't know if the city did, but we voted to have this subcommittee to look at these issues and Squire Sebastian was the one that was appointed by the court to do this. So I don't know whether we need to make another subcommittee to look at each one of them, but, but we can keep the fiscal court, from our standpoint, the fiscal court abreast of what comes out of it. And then ultimately, I do think we were gonna need to have a joint committee. Once we narrow all this down, that we will need to come back and have a joint meeting with the city and county, a full board meeting.
Squire Sebastian?
Thank you, Mr. Long. You know, this may be something that the court indicates that it would like to send to the strategic planning committee to, to, to get more information and arm individuals with so that they can be more educated. Because a lot of these topics, our strategic planning committee has, has talked about. And that, and that may have happened with the city as well. So, you know, I guess when we take it back to our respective body, we'll, we'll kind of see where, where they stand on it and perhaps the, the city, city commission will do the same. And there may be some thoughts that we haven't, you know, that haven't been voiced to, you know, given voice today, you know, in our, in our time together that, you know, need to come up and, and perhaps the bodies see advancing these topics maybe in, in a different way. You know, because obviously individuals on this group can't make decisions. They have to take it back to their respective bodies anyway. So getting their input about how they see things unfolding, I think is, as, as we've all hit on, I think that's the key thing at this point. That would inform the work of this committee much better, for sure. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
So my, we're both gonna go back to our respective governments and inform them, are we going to? And yes, what's the next step after that? Do we then get back together? And if we, if, if the city commission decides that we wanted to go subgroups or then, you know, how are we gonna do that without?
Ted, so, so Mayor, we are, our next meeting that we could bring this back to would be the 28th of October. And we'll put that on the agenda to bring back just a, a review of that. If we can set a next meeting and then either the fiscal, the fiscal court and the city commission can decide who would come to that next meeting or keep the same format, but let's, why couldn't we just set a meeting based on when you all can, when you have your next meeting and inform your, your city commission? And we can go after that date, after the 28th for us, after whatever date it is for you all. I don't know what date that is. So can we just do that? Just set a next, next meeting and then everybody? Whoever comes will come as part of what's set by the commission and the court.
Are we, we're gonna try to have the next meeting focus on one topic or all, all of these topics at once?
Ted, I, I don't think, I mean, we, we don't want to go four, five, six, seven hours because I do believe that if we could go just economic development, we could go forever with economic development. But I do think that it is my opinion that we pick one and we thoroughly vet it, go through it. And we have all of the, in my opinion, we should have the players here to talk with them. KCDC, and if you want to include DFI as part of economic development and anybody else, any of the board members from, from KCDC, even industry or even other businesses if you want. But we should have people here to, to speak, to talk about what they do. If, if we have questions about what KCDC does, I think KCDC should be allowed to say, this is what we do. And build upon the good things, as you said, Ted, earlier, what are things we are doing right and build upon that.
Thank you. Squire Sebastian?
If, if we do go down that path, I think what would be the most valuable for us since the, the bodies appoint members to the board rather than having paid staff come, I'd rather hear from a board member. The board members set the procedures and the policies that the staff work under. They also set the strategies and objectives for their board to move forward. So if we're talking about widget group A, they are determining how they make widgets and the priorities and goals for that. So I, I really, if we go down that path, I'd like to hear from a board member. That would be the path I would like to, to go down. Thank you.
I said board members and?
Right. I would rather, I, I, I would rather not, I would rather keep it small because if we, if we wind up getting 20 people on here, you see what the conversation has been among four today. So having one representative, a board member from the groups that were named, since they are the ones that are appointed to determine the path forward for those bodies, I think that would be, i- if we go down that path, and who knows if we will or if we won't, but I just, I just toss that out there. Because they are the ones that set the policy, procedure and direction. Thank, thank you for allowing me that. Thank you.
My professional advice on this would be to make sure that whatever form the meeting, the meeting takes, that it's, that it's well-prepared and that you have a very clear objective that you're trying to achieve at the end. And, you know, I think that, and I don't mean a controlling conversation. I mean a defined conversation about what the topic is going to be and at the conclusion, what you hope as, to have as an outcome. You know, I, I don't want to go on and on about this process, but, but I do want to say for this meeting, this, this is of all the meetings, one of the most difficult because you're starting out with not very many parameters. You're really trying to set a process and agree on some priorities. And sometimes, you know, that, that, that takes a little bit. So as the facilitator, I, I want to thank you for your patience and indulgence in doing that. And we took a look, took a little circuitous route to get there, but I think that we got to where at least now you can make an informed decision and go back to the, the fiscal court and the city commission and say, hey, we accomplished this and be proud of that. I mean, this is, this is, this was a rich discussion and outcome. I think it will lead to some action. Does anyone have anything else that they want to say? Is everyone clear on next steps in terms of?
Laura Ross wants to say something.
We have our city attorney.
Yes, yes, Ms. Ross, you may speak.
Hi there, guys. I just want to make sure, absolutely sure, before we leave here, clarify for me and so that I'll understand as we go back to our respective bodies. What is it we are bringing back to them and what is the ask that we have of each body? We want to make sure that whatever we're going back to them with and however we're developing the conversation going forward, that both bodies are being asked to consider the same, the same next step. So if we are going back to announce the areas that you all have developed today and then ask them how they want to proceed with forming subcommittees, is, is that what we are, we are doing? Or could someone just clarify that for me? So I'm certain I understand going forward.
Laura, this is what I thought we would do. I would, we will go back to the fiscal court. We will talk about this meeting and say that we have come up with economic development as our number one issue and education, workforce, city, county, working together and leveraging parks plan. The first, then our next meeting will be economic development and so I will ask the court, is, do you, are you comfortable of allowing Squire Sebastian to be the member of the, of the working group to come back and start the, and continue with the process of trying to go through these items one at a time and coming up with a plan and coming back to the fiscal court and presenting you with those plans? That's the way I see this working.
Thank you, Judge. So, so I'm assuming we'll do the same thing than Mayor, which is see if the board as a whole, the will of our board is in agreement that the group, as, as has been established, you and, and Commissioner Waldrich will continue on and this group itself will continue on tackling one issue at a time. Is, is that right? Am I understanding that? Okay. Just want to make sure so we don't have any confusion when we get back to our group.
And I want to, is, is, when we say economic development, are we, are we meaning KCDC on this? Or is that, because this whole thing's economic development.
Laura, do you see any problem about having KCDC as part of, of the conversation as we go through economic development?
I do not see a problem of having a representative KCDC there at all, of course. My only issue would of course be, we have to be careful if we get a quorum of them together, then it becomes, of course, a joint meeting of their group and ours.
Is, can I ask, is Rick Sparks here?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. I hadn't heard from you. I hadn't seen you. So I apologize. Or do you have a problem with asking KCDC, the director of KCDC and any of their board members, since there would not be a quorum because it's, there's only three board members to be part of a conversation and developing goals and objectives for economic development?
Well, well, you're excellent. And, and I, since we've talked about different elephants in the room, KCDC is a neutered board. I'm not sure KCDC can take any action. Anyway, there are different opinions on it. They don't have a quorum by definition. They're a neutered board. It's questionable and has been questionable until they're fully constituted, at least have a quorum. You'll just be inviting individuals to appear who will, in my opinion, have no authority to speak on the board in, in any form or fashion until they get sufficient numbers for a quorum. It'll be picking people out of a hat, basically.
But you, but there's not an issue?
That's a, well, yeah, that is the issue. KCDC, it, it needs to be constituted. KCDC has some serious issues. They don't have a quorum. They can't function, in my opinion. So you'll just be picking one of your appointees as it stands right now. And they can't speak for the board by definition.
I think, Ted, I think Laura Hag wanted to say something.
Sure. Go ahead, Laura.
Sorry, I just had a quick question. In thinking in advance, what Laura was asking, what we're taking back to our respective legislative bodies. If there's not agreement for our legislative body to proceed in this way that you all have proposed, then I, do we have this meeting to come back again and consider another way of moving forward? Because I think there are some other, there might be other commissioners and folks who might be interested in subcommittee so more people can get involved. But I know that has to be discussed at the legislative body. I just wonder if there's not agreement with what you propose when you go back to those respective bodies, what is the next step?
You not, are you saying not in agreement with the four items that they, that are listed or how to proceed with the four items?
I would say how to proceed with the four items, the one by one or, and, and both. I mean, we'll come back and someone may say, as you all have discussed, there's other items that were discussed in that joint meeting that are not mentioned here. So in that sense, if there is another item or there is not agreement with the way that you all have laid out to proceed, what is the next step then after that? So we know that in advance and can then proceed to that next step, whichever one it could be, whether there's agreement, we know what the next step is. There'll be a joint meeting. If there's not, I would like to understand the, the process so we can carry that forward for you all.
It's gonna be kind of hard to answer because we don't know that answer. I mean, we don't know the answer to that because we have to go back to the full board to get that kind of answer.
We'll have to see after both boards meet. It's kind of like the comp plan funny. We, one did it, one did not. We're gonna have to get back and revisit it.
Or yes, you'll just plan that this group will get together and revise what the process is considering the input from all the other commissioners and magistrates. So knowing that, that that would be a next step rather than moving forward with that first discussion.
Right.
Understand correctly.
And Waldrich?
I just want to understand.
Thank you, Ms. Hag. Yeah. So, you know, I have a, a question as well, similar to city manager. You know, just making sure that we understand how we're implementing, how we're gathering the, these groups, you know? For instance, you know, like if we don't agree, you know, it, our committee, our commission as a BOC, Board of Commission, we're all in one, same powers, things of that nature. And we sort of, you know, came to a disagreement on who should be on and there was multiple people that wanted to be on, but we are a small board. So three of us is a quorum. So it was really hard to sort of pick and choose on who's here and who actually gets to speak. And so I guess when we're creating these, do we say, these are not appointed positions? These are positions that the court comes together and votes on. These are positions that the city also votes on to put these people forth. Because I think in the instance, and I'll speak on behalf, you know, with the court, you know, the court met before the city commission. And it seemed like for this committee, when the court received the information, it wasn't really voted on as a whole entire board is what I'm, or court is what it seemed like. It seemed like that they had an ultimatum. It was the judge was on it and you have one position to vote someone else on. It wasn't, does two judge, or does two squires get on there or is it the judge and that? It was like they had an ultimatum of the judge automatically took one position. And we have to understand that in all these committees, it doesn't mean that the judge or the mayor always has to be on these certain committees and take up one position. It could very well be two commissioners. It could very well be two intelligent judges or squires as well. So for me, it, it needs to be a vote on how we want these structured and what, what subcommittees follow with. um follow with each squire or magistrate or a city commissioner, mayor or judge. Where do we all fit best? And it would be unfair for our commissioners and, and our BOC or even the, the court to always feel like that there's always one position of their court or of their commission that's always fielded just because we are, we, the city automatically implemented because the judge said he was definitely a position. There was only one voting, but then that put the mayor doing the same thing and we only had one position. So I want us to know that we are one board uh within itself uh for the city. And we all have the same working power. It takes three of us to get anything moved. And I would assume that that would be the same over in the court. I don't know your judicial system, your system. However, I do know that it does take votes to get certain things done. So I just want to understand that, like there's no leverage there, that there is clean board. Everyone should be voting on who's on this board or speak, if the mayor is going to be our spokesperson to collect the data on who we think should do that, then we send everything to the mayor or the city manager rather, the city manager, and then they can communicate to everyone else.
I will speak, I'll speak as senior facilitator on this. And that it is the responsibility of each governing body to decide for itself who would be represented on the committee. And, 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 and I don't mean that in a, in a smart way or anything like that, uh, Commissioner. I, I, I understand your concern, but the, the difficulty that cities and counties having worked, worked together is that they're two different animals. And just the fact that they're sitting here together is a miracle in this state, frankly. And I'm very proud of that. And so, you know, for, for, for the city, uh, you know, your form of government is one way. And for the fiscal court, it's another. And so each has to decide. And that, that's, that's how the decision gets to be made. And whoever is sent works together, hopefully.
And in my mind, it depends on what the topic is. You may have a different makeup. We have some commissioners that gravitate toward, toward a certain topic and know more about a certain topic. And I think that's the way I, I perceive this. It's not going to be the same people over and over.
I completely agree.
Uh, Commissioner, um, the fiscal court is different than the city commission. The fiscal court, the judge has the authority to appoint himself to a committee as a committee is established so. Uh, and I do feel like the judge should be on the committee. I, uh, I'll remember when we left our last meeting, it was that we said that the judge and the mayor would, would form a committee. So we outlined what we thought would be a fair committee. It must, without question, if you have two members, we need to have two members. If you have three members, we need to have three members. Uh, so uh, the makeup, I, I understand you don't like me being on here or you don't want the mayor to be on here. But uh, we do have that authority, or I do, and I, I don't know about the mayor. But uh, we are voters just like you on, on, on the committee. So we do not want to have a quorum and I guess you all probably don't want to have a quorum either. But if you do, you do.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, I'll just follow up on that. No, it's not that I per se don't want you on the committee for the mayor. I just want it to be fair in how it comes about. And if that's what your um court does and you just automatically appoint yourself and that's your rules and regulations, then that's how you, that's how you rule your, uh, your court. That's fine. That's not what I'm saying. What I am saying is we have to be open. We have to be uh honest uh with ourselves and what we're moving and who serves on these committees. If you feel that you and the mayor shall be on this, that's fine. The mayor said that he wanted to be on it because you were on it. I'm fine with that. The mayor chose me. It was really hard. There was three of us that wanted to be on there, or actually four of us, I think, mayor, if I'm not mistaken, wanted to be on that and a three's quorum for us. Um, and I just want to make sure that everybody that wants to sit on a committee or a subcommittee gets to do that and that their seats are not already filled. You know, mayor, I, I, I think you've been, I, you've been in city government. You've been in county government for many years here in the city of Frankfurt in Franklin County. So you've served on plenty of committees and, and, and plenty of uh other things. So sometimes, you know, I, I'm just saying, you're elected, you're an elected official and people want you to serve. But sometimes we really need to hear from some other people and not always quiet some of our city commissioners or some of our magistrates just for us to speak. As you know, I stated, I speak uh right now and, and I'm speaking from our meeting and, and, and some of our commissioners. Um, and I trust that the mayor is going to come back with us and actually represent us well, uh, because we are now having a community of uh relationship now. But you know, some people don't feel that they get communicated with or maybe ideas get looked over because the same exact people as the mayor shared. Some people may not serve on the committee over and over. And there's a reason that the mayor said that because some people are great in understanding and, and, and integrity in, in certain areas and some people may not be great. Like for me, there are certain areas I may not know. Planning and zoning is not my forte. So I don't feel the mayor will put me on that because I ask a lot of questions to our planning and zoning people. So for me, we want to continue moving forward and not continuing in what, what the past has brought us to. And sometimes it may not be best for you or me or the mayor to serve in certain positions. And that's okay. We shouldn't take it in a negative way. It's just we're wanting to move forward and it's time for something new on certain committees. That's all I'm saying.
Well, and I do, I, I'm not going to sit here and argue with you about it, but it's not really up to you to decide who, who's best to serve on it from our side. It will be up to us to decide that.
Who's us?
Fiscal court, us, magistrate.
Okay, exactly. That's what I'm saying. And I'm not arguing with you. I can agree to disagree. That's not fine. I, I stick by, stick by what I've said. Um, you know, just, just for instance. People have led this community for so long and things continue to go in a certain way. And our mayor is a new mayor. He has new and fresh ideas and he's bringing the things to, to the table and allowing for us to think broader. And that's all I'm saying is that you have some new people on your board that may be able to sit and give us different direction and different ideas from the court sometimes. And you should really utilize them sometimes and not always feel like the mayor or the judge will step in. It's the mayor, I think our mayor has done well in how he decided for us to be on this uh particular committee. And if he chooses that I should not sit on that, that'll be a discussion. I don't always need to be on every single committee. And there are people who have strengths and weaknesses and we need to utilize that. That's all I'm saying. But I'll agree to disagree with you and that's fine. And, and I'll work with you and anyone else. But I just want everyone to have the opportunity to be able to put their voice out there and show, um, show what they want for this community and not be sort of um asteriskized, I guess, in the, in the manner of not being heard. That's all I'm saying. And I, I feel that the mayor understands me completely on that, that I want everybody to be heard.
Well, I'm gonna say one other thing. I appreciate you saying that the process was done right because, by the city, because the process was done exactly the same way by the county. Uh, it was chose, the fiscal court chose Squire Sebastian. She said, uh, putting up for nominations who wanted to be on it. Squire Sebastian said she wanted to be on it. Every, everyone said, all right, let's hit, put Squire Sebastian on. So thank you for thinking our process was done correctly. Rick Sparks, did you want to say something?
Uh, yes, and, and Madam Commissioner, I, I just want to clarify this because I know that, that's Mr. Ross, go back and, and try to formalize some of the discussion here uh when we get done. When we last left the joint city meeting, the, the idea on the table was this ad hoc committee would be created to address sort of all of these issues. And you all have covered a lot of really good stuff. Lot of details on some things, uh, you all avoided the elephant really in the room because nobody likes to use that word. But you've recognized the duplication of services. You recognize the fact that we are, use different codes. You've recognized the inefficiencies between two governments and one county, et cetera. But my understanding when we left this was the ad hoc committee was going to be constituted by one group who was going to address these multiple issue. Now I'm hearing that the discussion has, has evolved, not devolved, evolved properly into discussions as to each issue and an ad hoc committee as to each issue. Did I understand that correctly or did I misunderstand that correctly? I think I misunderstood it correctly. Uh, I think the discussion now is to appoint different members or consider appointing different members as to each topic that was brought up, which is slightly different than the presentation and at, at least in the joint meeting where it was one committee evaluating sort of the overlay of the land. Could you, do you mind clarifying which way we're talking about going?
Um, are you speaking to me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Yes. No, uh, no, I agree. I was confused and I think uh the mayor and I spoke on this. I also spoke with this, with Ms. Ross because I was a little confused on how it was going in the, in the verbiage of that as well. I think that this was supposed to be a very simple committee. I think we went a step further than I thought we were going to in this committee. So I would have to agree with you. But I think the vision right now is that we have this committee. This committee now goes back to, to our prospective boards, commission and courts. And then from there, we agree on those three or four items as the mayor listed earlier. And that we go from there and then uh we say we have an economic subgroup. Now, uh, I think that, go back to what the judge was saying, is we come back together as one body uh and discuss that before we break off into our subcommittees, which I would be okay with that. And then the subcommittees would be separated and then each, the court itself would vote its two members on. And then the commission would vote its two members on if we so want to keep that at two members. And then whether that's a community member or vice versa, or Penny or whoever, then it would be voted in that manner. All I was just making clear is that it's two voted positions, not one appointed position and then one voted position. But I got that clarity that, that the judge is allowed uh that power in his honor to appoint himself to any committee. Um, and so I don't know if it's so clear as that on our side. So we do more voting. I know the mayor has a couple that he can appoint to. Um, but that's, it's voting after that. That's sort of my vision.
So were, were you discussing or, or do I understand that, that what's being discussed is a a subcommittee or a sub discussion group as to each of the topics? That, that's my question. So you've got economic development, you've got zoning, you've got education and uh workforce development. Would that be unique groups?
So my comment was referring, I'm sorry, I know I have two other people. My comment is referring to each, when the committees are made for each subgroup, that they shall be open, that there are two positions from the court, not to one to be appointed and vice versa. The judge is saying that he does it differently. We only followed suit. What I was saying was correct in our process was the mayor actually had a conversation with myself and the mayor had a conversation with people in our conversation on our board meeting. And then he called us uh as individuals asking why or if we wanted to be on that particular committee. That was to me done appropriately in speaking with them before we had that one position was already gone. When we came to the meeting, we thought there were two positions to vote on. When we got to the meeting, there were only one because the judge had appointed himself. That was the clarification.
I think.
That's what I was asking. You're referring to dis, you're referring to discreet committees. Correct?
I think Rick, one thing we need to step back a moment and Laura Ross has her hand up because we had a different interpretation and why we didn't vote um and making this, we have to do a municipal order. So I'll let Laura Ross talk about this. Um, she can speak to it.
And that, and that, that's why I think that's what it's going to go to. I was just trying to get the parameters.
My suggestion would be to, um, I, I think I'm hearing what all of you guys are saying. I would like the opportunity to talk with Rick um and set up something that we both agree on as close as we can to present to you guys as a format. I realize the county's going to be the first one to meet. Is that right? No, no, we are. Okay. Um, so it will come to the city first. Um, the city can take a look at it and then uh present it, you know, and then after that you guys can take it to the county. But I, I think we have to have some sort of formalized established process here or we're going to be spending a lot of time um trying to set forth parameters that we have no idea if both bodies agree on. And like you all have all said, it's really difficult when it's a city and a county, all the different layers and very different forms of government. So if you all will allow Rick and I to work together somewhat and try to get something on paper, then we can bring it back and hopefully be able to move on very quickly.
Uh, I, I completely agree, Madam Slaughter. And that's what I was asking for. So, so I was trying to identify what those parameters for that instrument would be. Uh, so we wouldn't have to volleyball it back and forth and just try to, try to get it right the first time. So thank you all very much. I didn't mean to interrupt the flow of, of a good discussion. I just wanted to know the, wanted to know where the, where the beacons are so we can make sure.
Thanks Laura.
Thank you ma'am.
Thanks guys.
All right. So where things stand at this point, what I'm hearing is that uh Laura and Rick are going to get together and, and hammer this out and then bring it to you all for your consideration. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
I can't hear you, mayor. I think you.
Okay. All right. So let me, um, let me say again, um, it's an honor and a privilege to be with you. And thank you for being kind and civil and good players and good representatives of the citizens in your um, in your city, in your county. And uh, I wish you all the best in the future and I know that some good things are going to come out of this. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thanks Ted.
Hi everyone.
Adjourn. We adjourn. Sherry, are you okay to adjourn?
She already got off. Oh, there she is. There she is.
She's been on the whole time. We have to formally adjourn this, so.
We, are you okay to adjourn?
Yes.
Motion first, best, we're, we're adjourned.
All right. We're adjourned on the city side. Is that all right?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. I'm in favor.
Thanks everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you all.